I'm going to open this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone who came out tonight, especially with the weather being what it is, and I want to thank those who are connecting to the meeting tonight virtually through the Carroll Media Center. Thank you to them. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from January. As a reminder to the commissioners, we waived the meeting in February, and so we are now addressing approval of the minutes or discussion of the minutes from the January meeting. So I'll pause and let you look those over. As a general reminder, I believe there were two commissioners who are absent, so in approving the minutes, you know, vote accordingly, or I should say, don't vote accordingly if I'm too leading there. So with that pause, do we have a motion to approve or disapprove the January 27th Planning Commission meeting minutes?
Can I just make a correction on my name under number two? It's just misspelled.
We sure will, Martina. We left out an R.
Yes.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion has been made to approve the minutes from January. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Butts. We have a discussion. Any further edits or comments or corrections? Hearing and seeing none, then all those in favor of the motion to approve the January 27 Planning Commission meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Abstain. And a second abstention. So the motion is passed with two abstentions. Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. And I'll sign that at the end as we usually do. This is the part of the agenda now where we open the floor and the microphone to any citizen comments that a citizen wishes to make, and as I always do, I ask that those comments be on topics other than in the evening's agenda. When we get to those topics in the agenda, I will allow and ask for any public comment relative to that topic. So the floor is open. Do I see any interest in a public comment? Councilmember Demoter?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Steve Demoter, councilmember, resident of 32 years of the town. This is kind of an unplanned stream of consciousness comment I want to make, and it's not necessarily specific to any one agenda item. It's a generic comment. So again, I've been a councilmember for three and a half, almost four years. I am the liaison to the Economic Development Commission, and part of what I do as a member of the EDC and a councilmember, I take it upon myself, you know, I walk around town, I talk to the small businesses, I see how things are going, and some of the feedback I get is since COVID, a lot of our small businesses, they're hurting. They're still trying to recover and get their customer base back. They're trying to make improvements to their businesses all the while. And my main comment, I was a public servant for about 26 years in government, and I'm reminded of this myself, and I'm not trying to be preachy, but I just ask that you remind yourselves, you know, we are the government for the town, and our role is to support the citizens and support our small businesses, and we want to certainly follow rules, follow processes, follow the code, but we need to be customer and assistance oriented. And so if there are ways to help facilitate our small businesses in making improvements to their businesses, additions to their businesses, maybe some of those improvements are safety-related for the benefit of their customers, let's try and give our small businesses the benefit of the doubt and see how we can work to accommodate their needs, help them improve, all the while being true to our code and our requirements. So that's all I ask, is just to remind us all of, you know, we are the government for the town, we're here to support our citizens, and within those citizens, we have small business owners, and we need to try and nurture them and help everybody be successful. So that is my comment. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there any other interest in another public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the citizen comments portion of this evening's agenda and move into discussions with our Carroll and Frederick County planners. If I may, John, and you can certainly add on, we usually start with our Carroll County planner. That liaison with Carroll County is still open, and I believe most recently, they've indicated, and John, please correct me, they've indicated that they are actively hiring for that liaison to replace the previous liaison. In the meantime, I believe John reached out to the county Bureau of Planning to provide basically a fact sheet in lieu of a liaison per se, to give us basically what's going in the county via a fact sheet. So I applaud John for getting some information to us relative to Carroll County, and John provided that fact sheet. It's the sheet on your dais here that begins at the top water and sewer. I'm not going to go down through this, except I will elaborate on one particular entry after we've had some general comments on anything here. I turn to John, if you want to mention anything, John, about Carroll County?
Sure. Again, so I know at the bottom here, they do speak to the annual report, which if you don't, if you didn't remember, we did go through this in January. We feed them information every year for the annual report they give back to the state. And again, we did fill out that information, and it was signed and approved by the Planning Commission. So that sort of hits these bottom targets at the bottom here. We're always in communication with them. Basically, the 1st of January, I do a summary of what has happened in the town and how we move forward, any major developments, any major site plans, so they're aware of those changes. And then I would kick it back to you, Ralph, about our meeting we had with the county related to our master plan.
Right. So in the middle of that fact sheet from John, there is an entry, master plan update. And so I put together a one pager along with, John provided the attached slides. And so on that particular issue, just some quick words, in January, we were contacted, we being John and the town staff, and Martina and I were contacted to provide a master plan overview to the county, and the rationale behind that invite, which went to all the county municipalities, was because they're on the threshold of creating their own update to the county master plan. And so, as you all know, I believe it was in January, the county set up listening or collaborative sessions with the residents of Mount Airy up in the library. And so this is just another, in my terms, a good signal that they want to reach out as they begin doing that update, that they have a sense of what the municipalities are looking to do in their 10-year plans. And so as a part of that invitation, we set up the date, John, me, and Martina, to go up to Westminster on March 18th and give them roughly about a 45-minute presentation, which is available to every commissioner under that fact sheet. At the heading of every slide, that question and that topic was actually their question and topic that they gave to all municipalities. And so there are three specific headings, and so we met, we created a draft plan, we then vetted it through the mayor and the president of the council to make sure that we weren't going to get, you know, out of sync with their comments to those three areas. And so we delivered, and then I'll close this topic by saying, I think it went well. We got some accolades for how comprehensive our plan was, and in the discussions afterwards with the Bureau of Comprehensive Planning, their equivalent of the county planners to us, we got a lot of interesting guidance as to helping us accomplish some of the things we mentioned in that brief, working with their economic development folks, the equivalent of our EDC, working with their rec and parks and so forth. So it was a good, it was a good sit-down, it was a great engagement. Again, the signal that I get is that they're willing to listen to the municipalities as they bring together the Carroll County master plan, and I provided this to the mayor and the council president and to our council liaison for their information. So we'll just have to see what happens per their guidance afterwards. But let me open now to anything on the Carroll County roll-up that John provided us. Are there any questions or discussions from the commissioners?
I did receive this this morning, hence that's why it wasn't in your packet initially, so I apologize.
Oh, no, no. It's good. So with that, I'm going to turn to the Frederick County planner, and Ms. Vanessa Moreno is here. Vanessa, once again, thanks for coming through the bad weather out here, and as we interacted in January, a focus more toward the eastern side of Frederick County, so forth. Great. Good evening.
Vanessa, make sure your light has a green. Is your mic on?
Oh, there we go. Hello, everyone. So just a couple of updates on what the county's been up to. Similar to Carroll County, we're also working on our annual report right now to MDP. We are planning on workshopping that with the Planning Commission in a couple of weeks. We are also working on the five-year report to MDP as well, so kind of juggling those two things at once. Let's see. Our team is also holding various public outreach meetings to kind of gain some feedback and public input on the various plans we have in motion, such as the Green Infrastructure Plan, the Housing Element, and, I'm sorry, what was that last one? Or our update to the Historic Preservation Plan as well. We held our first two in Thurmont, in Middletown, in their libraries, and our last one will be in Urbana Library on April 7th. We urge you to all attend if you're interested or passing the word along to anyone else you think may be interested in providing any input. In regards to this area of Frederick County, as previously stated, Cherry Run, that development off of Green Valley Road, I think we're anticipating that going to the Planning Commission sometime in April or early May, so we're gearing up for that presentation. And then lastly, we actually do have a rezoning application in the Lake Lingonore area. It is currently zoned PUD, but I think they want, the applicant wants to make an amendment to the Phase 1 application process, and the applicant is looking to develop the property into 248 villa-style dwelling units. It's in an age-restricted community, so wouldn't have any effects to the schools and such, but this property would also connect to the eastern, I'm sorry, the western portion of the future expansion of Lingonore Town Center and bringing more connectivity into that area as well. And so right now, the applicant is currently working through the, let's see, traffic impact study, and we're looking to take this through the Planning Commission at the end of April. So, yeah, that's all I have for you guys today.
Are there any questions for Vanessa on either of those efforts, Cherry Run or the rezoning in Lingonore? Commissioner Wallace?
You said that the rezoning application is taking them from PUD to something that would enable them to...
They're making a slight amendment to the Phase 1 application process. It still will be PUD, but it's just a slight change, and, I'm sorry, I wasn't super specific. It's off of, it's 6218 Eager Town Road, formerly known as a Resco Investments property and also known as a Bell Farm property.
Thanks.
Any other questions? And could you remind me, Ms. Moreno, how many dwelling units are planned for Cherry Run?
Cherry Run, let's see. We have 665 single-family units and 164 townhomes.
So that's 1,200 plus altogether. Is that...
My math serves me correctly. Eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine. Gotcha. Okay. Wow.
I do have a question. So when is the last master plan meeting at which library again?
Oh, yes. That will be April 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Urbana Library.
We have town council, so I won't be there.
Oh, sorry to miss you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Vanessa.
Absolutely.
Please be safe heading home tonight.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
In closing the county planners' reports, we move on now to a topic on the agenda that references an objective that we have within our recently approved town comprehensive master plan, and that objective is an objective that the Planning Commission, fair to say, that we took on for ourselves to be the objective owner, and it has to do with updating the 15-year-old design guidelines that the town provides to developers when they do come forward with site plans, preliminary, final, et cetera. And the design guidelines are there to help guide those developers in facades, roof lines, materials, sidewalk, landscape, sidescape, streetscape designs, which are compatible with the town and with the Planning Commission. So it's a great aid for developers to come in early, knowing they are within the acceptance levels of such designs. And so again, I state that those design guidelines are roughly 15 years old, and we took on during the development of the master plan, the importance of updating them. In the January meeting, John, the zoning administrator, I believe, provided everybody with a copy of the design guidelines with a kind request that we looked them over in the interim, because tonight, what I wanted to do was highlight that objective, which is going to be updating these guidelines via a five-person committee. That's the wording used in the master plan for this objective. And so I provided a copy of that objective for everybody so that you could reference it if you need to, and you'll see that that five-person committee is constituted with John, the town engineer Barney, two volunteers from this Planning Commission, and then a member-at-large, because we felt inclined to ensure that a town resident was also involved with what was good ideas, bad ideas, again, quality of what we want to keep in harmony with our town of facades, roof lines, materials, so forth and so on. Before I focus on trying to get two commissioners to join that committee, I will say with respect to the town resident, I'm confident that we have identified that person, and that person has made application to the mayor for consideration, as it's written in our objective, much like we are here by appointment through the mayor with approval from the council. We wrote that citizen-at-large to also follow that same process. And so that form was provided to that interested resident, and she has completed it. As to whether that appointment will appear in the April 7th council meeting, I do not know if it's too late to get that in there. Councilmember Evans?
I haven't seen your packet yet, so I...
Gotcha. But it may be. It's of course dependent on Ms. Holly, I think, you know, building that agenda and so forth. But tonight, again, coming back to why is this being mentioned, it's because it's work that we called out, and there are two members of this dais here that I'm asking to step forward and do that. As I've said to every owner of the objective, and this is what we discussed in making the master plan, the way the objective is described in the plan sets about a goal, and then underneath it, it gives suggested implementing tasks and reference materials, and it's no different for this particular task. And so you can see that it begins with forming that committee, looking over the available material, including the outdated design guidelines, including other municipality design guidelines for examples and inspiration, and then building a timeline or a schedule within those five members as to when they can meet, how they can meet, to go ahead and start crafting and update to these old guidelines. So with that, and again, with a copy of it, I'm going to open to anyone who wants to ask any questions or throw up their hand to become one of those two. There may be a reward in it. Look at that. Why did he do that? Is there any interest?
I don't have a copy of that. I wasn't at the January meeting, so I would love a copy of that.
Okay. There's extra copies on the table in the lobby. Yeah. I put mine in a notebook. He provided them loose. I just stuck them in a notebook. But yeah, they are available.
And Ralph, real quick, I did pull some of these other guidelines up. They are enormous documents, so I didn't want to print them out for everybody. I figured we'll send them electronically.
There you go.
If anybody needs a hard copy, I can make it, but, I mean, we're talking 300 pages if I pull three of them together or so.
No, a copy that's electronic is fine. It could be edited, so something that could be...
Well, and I think back to how we were going to probably pick one person, be it me or whoever else, would be the person who would be holding that hard document, right? And then, you know, I think, you know, that is critical in how we handle that, so the end document has all the information in it, so that's precious footballs.
And again, if I were on this five-person committee, it would be totally within bounds for the five-person committee to ask for architects to come forward and give ideas, you know, what's contemporary materials, what's contemporary designs. That's totally within, now, that's an example of, you know, this is not lockstep, objective guidance, but if I were on the committee, I would also kind of, you know, solicit not only what's out there written, but also architectural advice and so forth. Again, we're trying to help developers down the road with getting as close to the quality and harmony of our current town appearance as possible in the realm of acceptable. So any interests?
O'Malley?
Great. Okay, so we have one.
So I do have questions. Is this going to be virtual, in person, before our Planning Commission?
Great question, and again, I leave that to the five members as to what best fits their schedules. Pass that down to Steve. So some town swag, and there's no, I was going to say, there's no burb...
Give the gifts out until you have the second one. The second person's going to expect that cup, too.
That's right. So I hope I answered that. I, again, that kind of goes back to the committee, once they form and get together, they can ratify some of these steps, they can add to them, they can interview other people who are in the smarts on design guidelines.
And I can piggyback on that real quick. I'm sure myself and Barney, I can't speak for Barney, but, you know, we would make ourselves available, you know, if it's after hours, then so be it. I mean, I appreciate all the volunteers and your time, so if it has to be in an evening and it's virtual or in person, I'd make myself available. And also, the six-month timeline, it might be difficult if we're soliciting some architectural advice and stuff, so I don't think, and again, we could meet whatever's convenient for everybody. It might be every other month, who knows? You know, so just making sure we make the good document for the town.
Yeah, I totally concur with that, and if this work takes more than six months, I don't see that as a problem, because we'll still, as we always have been, evaluate every plan that comes before us on its merits. This is to just get them closer to what we think is agreeable in design guidelines.
Ralph? I think we have another person that might be willing to chime in. Well, Bill, I think you had a lot of pull on the previous plan. I think it'd be great to pass it to somebody who might be...
I'm willing to help.
Okay.
Commissioner Wallace, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was just going to say I'm willing to volunteer.
Okay. I think we have them both then, and this is a limited edition.
Older. Put your taxes in it.
Listen, the...
Trade?
Well, listen, I thank both of you, and so for the rest of the commissioners, I would say, help them wherever and whenever we can. Ideas, suggestions, or whatever, because you know, at some point, they're going to have a draft that's going to replace these, and I would imagine it totally reasonable in their schedule of work, in their work plan, we will be having somewhat of the first look on that, okay? So there will be work for the rest of us for sure as this effort matures. So again, thank you to Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Wallace, and once that fifth member from the residents is appointed and confirmed by the council, then I think the group can go ahead and start working through the task. Fair enough? Any other issues on this task?
Is it possible to have more than five?
I think, so the objective calls five. I think if you want to be like an alternate...
Sure, I'd love to be an alternate for that.
So it's not called out in the objective?
Here's a piece of gum.
I've got mints, I'm good.
So John and Barney, just thoughts on that? Do you see a problem with a six as an alternate, a non-voting alternate in case either Steve or...
Somebody doesn't show up or somebody's busy.
Commissioner Wallace?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay, too. Let me run it by the mayor and Tim, just to be sure, but I think it's a grand idea. So if the five agrees with that, then they will have to keep Commissioner Bida informed, right? So that at any point, he can rock up, he can step up and, you know, and join the effort, so as an alternate. Okay. Enough on that item. We're right into the end here with reports and other business. Councilman Evans from the council meetings?
I will go back to February, since we did not have a February meeting. It was a pretty short town council meeting. For new business, we granted the sludge hauling contract to TEM for three years. That was unanimous. For ordinances, ordinance 2024-24 was approved unanimously in regard to a budget amendment to move 95,000 over to Rails and Trails East for culvert and paving needs. Ordinance 2025-1 was approved to buy two new police cruisers. One was taken out of a commission, and we also needed another one for the extra officer. And then Resolution 2025-1, approving the town's 2023-2033 master plan was approved unanimously. For nominations, Lucy Regal was reappointed to Streets and Roads, Elizabeth Pofallo was appointed to EDC, and Stacy Spearman was appointed to Sustainability. That was it for February. Now on to March. Before the meeting, we swore in our new lieutenant, Brian Hopkins, to the Mount Airy Police Department. He comes from Baltimore, retired Baltimore with over 25 years of service. For new business, we tabled the conversation about the PWA for Antietam broadband regarding the fiber optics due to their lack of representation. April 19th, we will be holding Shred Event from 9:00 to 12:00, and the Curb Side Bulk Pickup... April 19th, we will be holding Shred Event from 9:00 to 12:00, and the Curbside Bulk Pickup will be on May 10th. For ordinances, we scheduled and held the public hearing regarding the ordinance 2025-3, revision and amendment of the zoning map. There was a lot of good feedback from concerned citizens regarding some of the proposed changes. We will be voting on that next week at the April Town Council Meeting. For nominations, Michael Shippen was appointed to Streets and Roads, Austin Deiches and Diane Bayless were appointed to Sustainability. Next town council meeting is next Monday, right here at Town Hall. And that is all I have for my report this month.
April 7th, right? Is there a public hearing, if, Councilman Evans, I'm sorry, is there a public hearing prior to the opening of the regular council meeting?
The public, yes. Why did I forget that? Yes, there is a public hearing.
Trying to remember what that, or was that the...
I don't think it's for the rezoning.
Oh, that was last time.
Not for the rezoning.
No.
That already occurred.
It was for the police station.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
There you go. For the bond, police station bond. Right. Okay. Thank you very much. The zoning administrator, John, has also provided two of his zoning administrator reports, January and February. These are before you. I turn to John. John, are there any highlights on either of these?
Not really much to mention. It's pretty much their normal. If anything, a little less than we normally would have for total permits. So if anybody has any questions, I can clearly answer them, hopefully.
Any question on the zoning administrator reports, January or February, for John? Hearing none. Then the last item is a reminder that our next Planning Commission meeting will be for April, on the last Monday of April, which is April 28th, here again in Town Hall at 7:30 PM. And as I always do, I quickly look left and right on the dais. Are there any last topics for a commissioner to introduce for this evening's agenda? Seeing none, it is roughly 8:02 PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.